When students at Stige Elementary School are being exposed to sewage, lead and asbestos, we are obligated to support them. When our newcomer academies don't have enough slots, so our newcomer students have to be put in classrooms where they don't understand the language, we are obligated to support them. When seventy percent of our black students are not reading at grade level, we are obligated to support them. When teachers in our school district are facing a severe teacher shortage because of low pay and dysfunctioning work conditions, we are obligated to support them. My name is Anthony Gatto and I'm running for the Contra Costa County Board of Education because I know that we can do better. My journey in education policy began around two thousand sixteen, when my wife and I started organizing students, parents and community members around education policy. We believe that through policy and advocating to the school board, we can improve our education system. To better serve our students, Mitsubishi became a teacher at Kennedy High School where she served for the last seven years, going on eight years. And I decided to run for school board at the age of twenty-one years old in two thousand eighteen. After losing my election, I conducted an exit interview where I started asking folks, what can I do to better serve our community? The two biggest pieces of advice I got was to get life experience and leadership experience. So a few weeks after losing my election in two thousand eighteen, I decided to enlist in the United States Army in active duty. I served two years in South Korea and a year in Kuwait. After coming back from active duty, I continued my service in the military by serving in the National Guard where I'm at today for a total service of six years and counting. This campaign is built on my commitment to public service and accomplishing the mission. When our current county board trustee Consuela Lada decided to retire and endorse our race, I committed to fulfilling her mission of trying to support our students. I'm endorsed by the Democratic Party, by the Contra Costa Labor Council, by the Contra Costa Building Trades Council, as well as United Teachers of Richmond and the California Teachers Association. And I say this to say that our campaign is built on coalition. I believe that through sound policy and through collaboration and willing leaders, we could improve our schools. And I hope that throughout the rest of this forum, you can learn more about myself and my policies and you feel confident in supporting our race. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Mr. Heiss, three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Nathan Heiss. I'm just really excited to be here. For the last fifteen years, I have been in and around the field of education. And with your vote, I will continue my mission of ensuring that our young people feel seen, heard and valued. I have created and facilitated educational programs on financial literacy and personal and professional development for students around the country. I have read scholarship applications, collaborated on research, served as a capstone project advisor for a graduate program at Georgetown University, and I've spent a majority of my career working in higher education. I've worked as an administrator and fundraiser in the UC and CSU systems, as a nonprofit management consultant focusing on institutions of learning, and as the executive director of a scholarship granting nonprofit organization. I believe that education is the pathway to a brighter future, but this brighter future isn't just for students. This journey is open to all of our parents, our teachers and our neighbors. President Barack Obama recently said that when every child gets a good education, the whole economy gets stronger. A good education, though, isn't exclusive to classrooms and coursework. It's a holistic experience that shapes lives. If elected, I will work tirelessly to provide every single student with the resources they deserve and fight to improve student outcomes post-matriculation and graduation. Together, we can eliminate the school-to-prison pipeline and give our most at-risk students opportunities for personal and academic growth. Hopefully, this will mitigate their enrollment in one of our ten continuation schools or four juvenile court schools. I will also see to it that the students who are enrolled in one of those schools have access to the same quality education they would have otherwise received. Together, we can combat student food and housing insecurity. Contra Costa County has nearly three thousand children and students who are unfortunately experiencing homelessness. And we need to work with our city governments in Sacramento to see to it that these students do not fall through the cracks without drawing unneeded attention. Together, we can create learning environments free of guns, violence, hateful rhetoric, and ensure that our schools are safe, clean and conducive to success in and out of the classroom. Together, we can provide our students with the tools to foster mental and physical wellbeing and create joy in learning. I will ensure that our board emphasizes that there is a world outside of social media and shield our students from the dangers of comparison and misinformation. And with your support, I will work with my colleagues on the Board of Education to lay the foundation for students to grow academically, socially and emotionally. I will not rest until, as President Obama said, we have a robust and muscular economy full of students whose personal and professional outcomes have outpaced the generations that have come before them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. I apologize, there's some construction happening in my background, so. We're gonna go right into the first question. We're gonna start with Mr. Heiss to the candidates. Can you guys still see the clock with you guys spotlighted here?
When it was on, I could see it. It's not on right now.
Okay. Um, let's start with, Madam, can you kind of troubleshoot that for us? Okay, uh, let's start with Mr. Heiss. Uh, what is the most important work that the Contra Costa Board of Education is currently doing?
Great question. Brandon, I think the most important work that our Board of Education is doing is making sure that every student has the right resources. Uh, I was at the Board of Education meeting earlier this week and I heard a very emotional and powerful presentation from Making Waves Academy. And, uh, this, this presentation, it was moving in many ways because it showed me that there is not just a value in everyone having access to the same resources, but it was also, i- it showed me that things aren't equal the way they are. And if elected, what I would do is I would work again tirelessly, as I said, to make sure that every student, regardless of background, regardless of how much money their parents have in their bank account, regardless of what their parents drive or where they come from, that they have access to the same and equal resources. I would also ensure that every single teacher is prepared in the classroom. Uh, I shared a story with the Caliber Beta Academy earlier this week, where when I was in school in LAUSD, uh, I recognized that student teachers were not funded very well. Uh, in my fifth grade history class, uh, the teacher had a wallpaper with every president, uh, up until present. Uh, and this was in the nineteen nineties. Uh, the last president was Jimmy Carter. Uh, that was clearly not who was president when I was in school. The teacher just ran out of resources and we shouldn't have our teachers spending their own money to put things like this into practice. So that being said, I, I believe that we need to make sure resources are the priority for not just students, but also teachers and schools themselves.
Thank you. Mr. Carl, same question. Let me know if you need me to repeat.
Uh, do you mind repeating it?
Yeah. What is the most important work that the Contra Costa Board of Education is currently doing?
Yeah, so the, the county board is a little different than the County Office of Education. The, the county board can request, uh, the County Office of Ed to do some services. And that's what I plan on doing. So I want to utilize the services that the County Office of Education has. So for example, professional development. The County Office of Education can facilitate professional development to our local school districts, like career technical education. If we have a teacher in our school district that wants to implement a career technical education program like expanding welding, for example, the county can actually provide the professional development needed so that we don't have to outsource to a consultant. So county, uh, on the board, I would, uh, definitely push for more professional development. That is a great resource that they have. Another one is grant writing. The County Office of Education can actually write grants to the state to bring funding to our local schools. For example, in Oakley Unified on the other side of the county, uh, they have a problem with literacy, just like we do here in West Contra Costa. The County Office of Ed was able to write grants and get state funding for a literacy program in their school district. On the county board, I want to push for the same initiatives to be implemented over here. Hopefully, we could use them as a pilot program, learn from what worked well, what didn't work well over there and implement that here in West Contra Costa. And next is workforce housing. I'm very proud that the County Board of Education has passed a resolution in support of workforce housing. Using vacant properties that the county owns, we could create housing for our teachers and staff members. And the same, um, the same, a similar resolution was passed here at the local level for West Contra Costa Unified. And I was very proud to be at that board meeting and speak, uh, this past Wednesday. So there's some great work happening with the County Office of Education. And on the county board, I want to make sure that West Contra Costa gets a piece of that pie.
Thank you. Uh, next question, we're actually gonna start with you, Mr. Carl. Uh, how would you address school building inspection issues such as, such as the failures of inspectors at Stige?
I'm glad you brought that up. So one of the, one of the things is to make sure that there is accountability. So if these reports aren't lining up with the actualities of, of what's, what's being shown, um, we need to make sure that somebody's being held accountable. Now, I can't speak to personnel issues, but I, I believe, uh, that issue is being taken care of right now. Another, uh, way that we can mitigate that is by hiring third parties to do the inspections. I believe that that's what the County Office of Ed does, is they hire a third party to do their inspections, but also make sure that these inspections are happening more frequently and that they show actuals. In the report for Stige Elementary School, it was noted that if these deficiencies were remedied, um, for, for example, let's say, uh, like bathrooms were rated at eighty percent. I'm, I'm making up numbers because I don't have them in front of me. Let's say bathrooms were rated at eighty percent. Some of those numbers were based on future repairs. They weren't the actuals. We need to make sure that those numbers are actually the actuals of what's being reflected. Make sure that folks are being held accountable and make sure that these inspections are done more frequently. I believe they're done on an annual basis, but I believe that students, parents and teachers who witnessed these things throughout the school year should be able to, to report and call for re-inspections to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiss. Same question. Let me know if you need me to repeat.
No, no, that's okay. So this, this question should not take three minutes to answer. Simply put, Anthony said accountability. But what I believe is we need to set a standard of excellence. Uh, there should not be any school that is below a certain standard that we as a Board of Education set. That includes cleanliness, that includes safety, that includes hall monitors, that includes things like Stige. We should never ever have lead in our pipes. Why are we waiting until there's a problem? To fix it. We need to be proactive and we need to mitigate these situations before they occur. That is what a standard of excellence will do. It will set that, making sure that we are constantly checking to make sure that our schools again are safe, the water is clean, the food is healthy, everything is nutritious. And again, setting a standard of excellence is what I would do on the Board of Education. I would make sure that everything is where it's supposed to be at a specific level. At any time, anything dips below that level of excellence that I have said along with my colleagues on the Board of Education, I will make sure that those schools and those administrators and those people are being held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, right back to you, Mr. Heiss. Uh, what is the role of the Board of Education and how can the Board impact services to the local school districts?
Absolutely. So in my opinion, the Board of Education's role is to advocate for students, parents and teachers. We need to ensure that every student has again the same access to the same resources regardless of background. And you know, Anthony brought up something earlier about professional development programs and providing opportunities through grant writing. Uh, as someone who has both created and facilitated professional development programs and who has written and accepted grants, I believe that this is something that we should be doing more of. So in my experience, the Board of Education, especially having, uh, watched and read through agendas and sat in on some meetings, I genuinely believe that we have the power to build community. Uh, Anthony mentioned coalition. I believe that a community is, is what it takes to be successful in school. Uh, I, I could show my age in saying that Hillary Clinton once said it takes a village to raise a child. And I believe that the Board of Education is the majority of that village. I think that that village, it, it's imperative that that village has the ability and the power to hold people accountable when they're not meeting standards and also making sure that again, resources are provided to everyone. Uh, so again, to highlight community and coalition, collaboration and setting standards.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Same question.
Do you mind repeating it?
Yeah. Uh, what is the role of the County Board of Education? And how can the County Board impact services to local school districts?
Gotcha. Thank you. Uh, before I answer, I just want to address some of Mr. Heiss's answers previously. So part of the problem at Stige was, uh, lead in the paint, uh, not in the pipes. And there is a standard of excellence. The problem is that that standard was not being met. Uh, there, there is like safety standards and, um, um, like, uh, like fire safety standards, like those standards already exist. And the county board does not set the standard. You, you said that you'd want to make sure that those standards are implemented if you're on the county board. It, it's the local school boards that set the standard. All the county board can do is, uh, have an independent, um, inspection done on their behalf, uh, just to set the record for the folks watching. As, uh, in regards to what the board can do, the biggest resource that the county board has and the County Office of Education is to fill the gaps in a lack of resources at the local school level. Think of the county board as a facilitator between the state and the local level. So for example, uh, like I said, grant writing, professional development, things like that, but it goes beyond that. So the, the County Office of Education actually has a, a teacher mentorship program called TIPS, where they will take incoming teachers and pair them with experienced teachers to mentor them. And I think that that's a great way, that's a great service that we could bring in our classrooms to make sure that our students have high-quality teachers. Uh, another way that the county board can, um, can bring, uh, services to our, to our schools is, uh, around the juvenile detention center. So the county board does not oversee the juvenile halls. That's the County Office of Education. But the county board does approve the budget and set curriculum or approve curriculum. If elected to the county board, I want to focus on ways that we can prevent students from being put into these schools by working with the school district to make sure that we can identify issues and solve those issues with students before they get there, as well as improve our re-entry system. Once these students go from the juvenile halls back into our classroom, I want to make sure that they don't come back to the juvenile halls. What it's gonna take is curriculum and, uh, support services to support those students.
Liberated music. Thank you. Uh, okay, moving right into the next question. Uh, what is your stance on charter schools and their role in providing, uh, public education, um, along with our traditional public schools? We're gonna start with Mr. Heiss.
Great question. Uh, so I believe that the role of charter schools is to fill in the gaps that parents see in choice. Uh, as someone who went to a magnet school in Los Angeles, I was lucky enough to have been selected through a lottery system. Uh, I believe that parents deserve more of a choice, similar to the way that my parents did. And I would say that, again, having seen the Making Waves Academy presentation earlier this week at the Board of Education meeting, I can simply say that I was blown away. I think that charter schools can actually set an example for what the rest of our public schools can offer. I believe that education and career counseling and college counseling, those are things that are all offered by traditional public schools. But I also believe that charter schools have figured out a way, at least at Making Waves Academy, they figured out a way to make this, set a, set a better standard. They've figured out a way to make it more accessible and more imperative for students to access. So again, when it comes to choice, I believe that that is exactly what a charter school offers and that is the role of a charter school. You don't have to send your child to a charter school, but you have the ability should you want it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Carl, same question.
Yeah, uh, for those not familiar with magnet schools, uh, magnet schools are not charter schools. Uh, they're still under, you know, school boards and things like that. That magnet schools are mentioned, but just for the record. I, I don't agree. I don't think that charter schools are there to fill the gaps. I believe that charter schools are a symptom. I, I don't think charter schools are a problem, but I think charter schools are a symptom of a problem and the problem with our education system. The reason why parents are choosing to go to charter schools and not necessarily because they're so great, but because that they felt neglected or denied by our school system. So when I look at a charter school, I don't see it as, I, I, I see it as showing that whatever schools those students came from need services and they need to be improved. So when I talk with parents who go to charter schools, I, I don't, I don't try to convince them to come back to our traditional schools. What I try to do is try to understand why they left in the first place. And I always ask them, if we could improve X, Y and Z reason why you left, would you bring your student back? And most of them say yes. Some of them really like the schools that they're at and you know, I support that because parent choice is a law. I support parent choice. But not every student can go to a charter school and a vast majority of our students are still in the same schools that are facing the issues that those parents try to leave from. So in talking with parents from the various charter schools in our district, especially the parents that try to petition new charter schools, uh, my big thing is understanding why they left and understanding what we can do as a school district to make sure that we don't lose future parents.
Thank you. Uh, right back at you, Mr. Carl. How will you improve safety for county schools in local school districts?
County schools in local school districts?
Uh, how will you improve, uh, safety for county schools and local school districts?
Gotcha. Okay. Uh, and by safety, are you talking physical safety, mental health safety or?
I think, um, yeah, across all platforms.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, most school districts have, uh, safety coordinators already in place and a lot of them have great ideas on, on how to implement their plans. So the, the, with the county board, I would just take the recommendations from the safety coordinators as well as listening to different, um, stakeholders. So listening to, uh, like, like different, uh, police unions, police departments, fire departments and safety goes beyond physical as well as mental and emotional safety. I want to make sure that students feel safe in the classrooms that they're in. A lot of our students who are in the foster care system or are homeless or, or are homeless, um, school might be the only place where they feel safe. And I'm sure my wife can attest to this with some of the students that she has at Kennedy High School, where school provides, uh, a sanctuary for them. And I want to make sure that we protect that. Part of that comes with training our teachers when it comes to, uh, racial biases and ensuring that they are tuned to the type of community that they're teaching to, as well as making sure that our facilities are in good shape. If you look at Stige Elementary School right now, they are currently at Dejana Elementary, I'm sorry, Dejana Middle School, right at the temporary school site. And they were mentioning that some of the fences are too low around where the preschool and kindergarten areas are. So anybody could hop a fence and be where those children are. So I want to make sure that when we look at facilities, facilities planning, especially when it comes to these school rebuilds, we really have a holistic view of safety in mind, not just physical, but also mental and emotional.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Uh, Mr. Heiss, do you need the question?
Uh, no. So this is, this is a great question. And safety is again paramount to one of the things that I want to focus on i- in this office. I, I genuinely believe that safety isn't relegated just to violence. It's also rhetoric. It's also, uh, facilities, as Anthony mentioned. It is safety coordinators. It's ensuring that students have every access to mental health resources and overall physical and mental wellness. I think safety is, the issues that you're seeing in the news today with schools is, is very unfortunate. And I think that is as a symptom of school systems and systems in general that don't prepare students to be mentally fit. And when I, when I say that, what I mean is students don't feel comfortable. And if we let any student fall through the crack, fall, fall through the cracks, whether they're experiencing trauma of their own at home and/or they're students who just don't have the resources to understand that there is something wrong. We need to make sure that those students have the resources they need without unneeded attention placed on them. We need to make sure that every single student feels safe, feels welcome, feels seen, feels valued. But again, we need to make them feel heard. So providing resources for mental wellness and physical wellness are things that are really important when it comes to safety. In addition to the other things like testing for lead in paint and pipes and testing, uh, and, and setting standards of excellence, including things like, again, those physical facilities and, and working with people who are on campus on the ground to ensure that everyone is, is feeling comfortable. So I'd also like to add, uh, when it comes to working with the police and ensuring that our, our students who are in juvenile centers and, and, and continuation schools, I have the endorsement of the Police Officers Research Association of California because they believe in me that I will help work with them to make sure that students have everything that they need.
Thank you. This is gonna be our last question and then we'll finish, uh, with closing statements. Uh, what is the most, the single most important issue facing the Contra Costa Board of Education? We're gonna start with Mr. Carl.
Do you mind repeating the question?
What is the single most important issue facing the Contra Costa Board of Education?
So the, it's, this is, you gotta wrap your head around the situation. Um, the County Board of Ed is very high-functioning. I believe the County Office of Ed and the County Board of Ed, they do not reflect the same types of issues that the local school board has. So when it comes to their biggest issue, I think it's that they could be doing more. And that's a good issue to have because they're already doing so much. I commend the work that they've been doing. And so when I get on the board, I want to build upon what they've already been working on. So I want to make sure that the, the grants are being written, the professional development's being given and to make sure that the, um, resources are being given to West Contra Costa Unified because they're already doing that for much of the rest of the county. And our local school district needs support and needs help. And I want to make sure that I'm a voice on the board to make sure that those needs are being heard. So when it comes to the biggest issue, uh, the first thing that I want to bring up is workforce housing because that's something tangible that we could be doing. The, like I said, the local school board has, has passed a resolution. The county board has already passed a resolution. The money is there, like the time is right. The state Superintendent Tony Thurman, who's endorsing our race by the way, is supporting workforce housing and the money is there from the county in, in terms of, um, uh, pre-building costs for Measure X. So the time is right for, um, for workforce housing, make sure that these teachers are, are being housed at a low cost. The time is right for career technical education programs because I, and talks with unions, they're worried about the workforce a couple of years from now. Uh, we gotta make sure that these students are trained, um, who, who aren't gonna, for the students who decide not to go to college or the students that decide not to go to, to the military like I did, we, we gotta make sure that we have some jobs provided for them and that comes with workforce training at the high school level. Uh, before my time is up, my opponent said that, uh, he wants to make sure that police give the students what they need. But police don't give students what they need, teachers do. And I want to make sure that our teachers are supported.
Thank you, Mr. Heiss. Final question.
Being almost played off there with that music. Uh, so this is a great question and I believe in a build-on, work-on system. If there's something that we are doing well, we need to build on it. If there's something we're not doing well, we need to work on it. And I believe again, and, and I just, I quickly want to go back to the, the comment on police. Of course, students get what they need from teachers and administrators, but there isn't, the, those people can't do everything. Unfortunately, we need people who are there to ensure that students are being safe or the students are safe. We need, we need people who are doing exceptional work inside and outside of the classroom. And I would also like to say that, again, going back to what we do well, uh, grant writing, professional development, mentorship programs. These are all things that, again, Anthony, Anthony said that we're already doing. But what I think we need to do is we need to build on those programs. As someone who has again written and accepted grants and who has built professional development programs, I would work with as many people as possible, including people in Sacramento at the local school, school districts, and try and meet with as many teachers as possible to help prepare them to do those same, same things in the classroom and elsewhere. So again, to answer that question, it's a build-on, work-on system. We're doing great things. We need to continue doing great things. But what we need to do more of is providing resources to teachers. Again, this is what it's gonna keep coming back to. The County Board of Education has a budget and they oversee budgets. And we need, we need to have someone in this office who has managed budgets and worked with budgets and make sure that money is allocated appropriately. And that is what I would do while on Board of Education.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna start with you, Mr. Heiss, for your two-minute closing statement.
So I'm just really honored to have had the opportunity to speak today. Uh, I want to thank you, Brandon. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, WOPA, the NAACP Richmond Chapter. I want to thank the Richmond Chamber of Commerce and everyone else who sponsored this forum. But most importantly, I want to thank the members of our community, our parents and teachers who are dedicated to the success, success of our students. Those who shared with me their thoughts and feelings on what they want for their students and their children. One of the main goals of our schools and our school systems is to prepare students to enter the workforce and/or attend college. It is our responsibility to create an environment that allows for economic mobility regardless of background. I believe that my educational, professional and personal experiences make me exceptionally skilled at preparing students for what comes after matriculation and graduation. I believe that the whole of my life experience makes me a uniquely qualified candidate for Contra Costa County Board of Education. And I'd encourage you to visit my website, www.danielforeeducation.com. If you have any questions, comments, thoughts, concerns, or just want to say hello, you can email me, daniel@danielforeeducation.com. Thank you again, everyone, for this tremendous opportunity to speak and to serve. And I hope that when you're looking at your ballots, you'll join me in building a lesson plan for the future by voting for Daniel Nathan Heiss for Contra Costa County Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Too many closing.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to go back to something my, my opponent said. I, I don't want people to be misled. The county board does not oversee budgets. The county board just approves or denies budgets that the County Office of Ed presents. So we, we have no say in how that budget is being, um, uh, we, we can't change the budget. So don't, don't think that having experience in budget means that you can change budgets that the County Office of Ed proposes. I, I want to use this time in closing to talk about our campaign. I'm very proud of the work that we've done these past few months. Our campaign is taking a coalition of retired teachers, current teachers, current high school students even. We had about, at our campaign launch party, we had about eight high school students volunteer at our event. We have a, a senior from El Cerrito High School who's our event coordinator. We have a former Kennedy High School graduate who's now a student at UC Berkeley, making calls for us and door knocking. So our campaign really reflects the type of work that we, that we plan on doing. Um, but it doesn't come cheap. Uh, you know, door knocking and things like that. So I'm very proud that most of our donors are, are from just normal, everyday people with an average donation of about twenty-five to a hundred dollars in between. Um, we're not taking any special, special interest money or corporations. I don't count unions as special interests because to me, unions are made up of the community. I don't count unions as special interests because to me, unions are made up of the community members that they plan on serving. So I'm very proud of the coalition that we built and the type of work that we're doing. I'm also proud that most of our policies are coming not just from my head, but from the people that I've interacted with. Door knocking and meeting different parents and community members. I'm learning the concerns that they have in their classroom. I'm following up with the teachers union, school board members who are endorsing us, city council members and wondering what can we do on the policy side to make sure that these positive changes happen. Because theory is great and I've heard a lot of theory tonight when it comes uh from what my opponent said, but theory only takes you so far. And if you vote for me, you're getting policy and you're getting practice and you're getting somebody who's willing to do what it takes to accomplish the mission. So I look forward to this November's election and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.